All right, it looks like six o'clock. So I'm going to begin the Board of Selectmen to order and I'm going to read the following. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting will be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone on the line intending to record this evening? Let me just look at my participant list. No, okay, so we can move forward. So maybe I'll just set the stage a little bit and we can move forward with hopefully more of a roundtable style discussion, although I realize it's a little bit artificial in the Zoom setting. But you know, the folks on this call, all of us, have worked really hard, I think, to come up with not only the budget at the end of the budget process, but given the economic recession caused by the global COVID pandemic, we've had to also put into place a financial management plan for fiscal year 21 that allows us, I think, as a group to move forward to town meeting with confidence to ask for town meeting's permission for not to exceed appropriation. And so the purpose tonight, I think, is because the budget process and what followed almost immediately after the budget process is different than what we have experienced in other years, I think we collectively thought it might be helpful to provide something that voters could access on Harbor Media in preparation for town meeting now that they've got their shiny new purple warrants in hand and this becomes top of mind. So on participating on the call today is members of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, the Assistant Town Administrator, the Town Accountant Sue Nickerson, Michelle Eyre, the Chair of the School Committee, Victor Baltara, and Bob Curley from the Advisory Committee and really sort of the main leadership group that moved this plan forward. So we hope you find this to be a helpful resource again as you prepare yourself for town meeting. There are kind of four areas that I think will focus the conversation on tonight. One sets the stage by discussing the town's financial policy, which provides consistency over the long term in the financial stewardship of the town. We will discuss the FY21 budget process that actually began last November. We will discuss the FY21 financial management plan that I alluded to. And then the other thing that's a little bit different because these warrant articles came up kind of a little bit off cycle is there are certain capital-related warrant articles that will utilize fund balance or the town savings account. And we want to highlight those feasibility requests for you and again, give you some confidence in the town's, I think, desire to continue its planning, but in a fiscally prudent manner. So that's what's on tap for tonight. And I turn first to a brief discussion of the financial policy. And I was wondering if maybe Mary, you might want to give us a little bit of background and kind of set the stage for how the financial policy is utilized and maybe Bob and maybe Bob and Victor could speak a little bit about how AdCom this year has viewed the financial policy and in particular, the use of unassigned fund balance.
Sure. The town financial policy was actually established back in 2008. It is voted on each year by the Advisory Committee. And about every three years, the Advisory Committee takes a look at the policy to see if there are any developments that warrant changing. The most recent version of the financial policy was approved three years ago in June of 2018. The policy really hasn't changed a whole lot since its inception, which I think speaks to the quality of the document that was originally put together. It basically establishes policies and metrics for to use as a guidepost with respect to expenditures. It looks at not just the town goals, but also trying to understand how decisions we make might affect the town's AAA credit rating, which is something that's important to all of us. There are basically three sections to the financial policy. There's a piece that speaks to financial management, a piece that speaks to capital outlay, and a piece that speaks to debt service. Within each of those sections, there are some metrics or measures that give us as a town a sense of kind of how we're doing against those targets. For example, one of them is how much fund balance do we have or how much debt we're carrying or how much capital we're spending. And those are just very helpful guideposts that I think help, you know, maintain the services that we like in Hingham, but also being mindful of the financial markets. And I just wanted to share something. Recently, we actually went out to market for some debt and the, I just want to read this because I think it speaks to the financial policy. It said, "Hingham's credit position is superior and its AAA rating far exceeds the median of AAA communities nationwide. Key credit factors include a very healthy financial position, strong wealth and income profile, and a considerable tax base. It also reflects an affordable debt burden and a moderate pension liability." Basically, over time, the town and the Advisory Committee use the financial policy to give us an indicator of how the decisions we're making might affect the credit markets. And I just make one last point about the financial policy. The fact that Hingham has a financial policy and that we actually make decisions that are consistent with the policy is more important to the rating agencies than the metrics themselves. When the credit agencies are assigning ratings, they look at the quality of management. So you know, Karen, I know you're going to talk a little bit later about the FY21 and potentially looking at using our fund balance, but we very much relied on our financial policy in making that decision. And that's really what the rating agencies are looking for. Do you have a policy? And then, you know, in good times and in bad, do you make decisions that are consistent with that policy? So that's in a nutshell. I don't know if there's anything else specifically you want to add or Victor or Bob want to add anything.
No, I think that's perfect. And it's interesting, Mary, that the financial policy grew out of the last major recession in 2008. And in part, I think it grew out of one of the attributes you were talking about, which was the ability to access unassigned fund balance. And how do you treat the town savings account and what expectations should taxpayers and departments and others have when you think about the town savings account? And at that point, that was when we were just coming off or we'd been put on credit watch, right? Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, we built, I guess, we worked really hard to get to the position that we're in today and we're very fortunate to be in that position. And to your point, I think adherence to some framework for the town's finances and a philosophy that everybody understands is the approach, I think, has been important to our consistent financial planning, notwithstanding the fact that Boards of Selectmen change, Advisory Committees change. You know, we've agreed in principle that this is how financially we will run the town.
And I do think to your point, that consistency is really important, you know, not just for citizens of Hingham, but also for the rating agencies.
Right. So I think that was a nice segue for maybe Victor and Bob to pick up. You know, you now are working with the financial policy. You worked with the financial policy to craft the FY21 budget initially. And, you know, we all work together to think through how we might utilize fund balance in the situation we find ourselves in today. And maybe you could talk a little bit about how you viewed that. I know, you know, Bob and Victor both had strong feelings about how we approached fund balance in this, in structuring the financial plan.
Well, to start off on that question, Karen, you need to point out the, so the financial policy provides that unassigned fund balance should be kept between 16% and 20% of what's called total annual expenditures. That's just a shorthand for our Article Six, Article Four, and Article Five budgets. Article Six is the big one that we vote on every year. Article Four is some additional money that's set aside for contractual changes and increases. And Article Five are the smaller salaries for town officers like the Selectmen, the assessors, and the light plant and the clerk. Backing up though, so fund balance has a number, and this is shown on the prior slide, fund balance has a number of categories. We have non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, unassigned. We're talking about unassigned fund balance. And that's what the policy says. It should be kept in an amount no less than 16% or as high as 20% of the town total annual expenditures. We've, as of, now back to the next slide, Michelle, thank you. So as of June 30 of last, 2019, last year, which is when fund balance is certified each year, so that's the most recent number we have. It's approximately 30,500,000. That's 26.5% of total annual expenditure. So we're above. And that's the eighth year in a row that we've been above the 20%. It's also the third year in a row that we've increased from the prior year. So how is unassigned fund balance, how does it build? Well, it's simply the accumulation each year of the difference between surpluses in the budget and deficits. So if we have a year where there are a lot of turnbacks from departments that they haven't used their entire budget, that money goes back into fund balance. It will go up. If it's a light snow and ice year, it may go up. If it's a bad snow and ice year, we may be dipping into fund balance. So that's, it's really the changes each year in the excess or deficit in the budget. So let's see. When we look at how we're going to use fund balance, we typically, well, we typically have not been using it, but the financial policy says that, all right, if you've been several years in a row and it looks like you're going to be consistently above the 20%, you consider using it for, and the slide shows four of those items, unfunded long-term liabilities, meaning pension or OPEB, other post-employment benefit liabilities that will be hitting the town down the road, long-term non-recurring capital, retired debt, or perhaps targeted tax relief. Those are all set forth in the financial policy as possible uses of excess fund balance. What we as a town have been basically saving the money for the excess is to offset some of the costs of these future large capital projects that have been on the town's radar for a number of years. School buildings, public safety buildings, perhaps library, a whole list of possible capital projects that have been discussed off and on for a number of years. So that's what we have been keeping our excess fund balance in our back pocket, as it were. Bob, I don't know, do you have any other thoughts on either the policy or fund balance?
Well, the few things I could add with respect to Mary's initial comment. The last review of financial policy in 2018, probably the most significant addition was language about ensuring economic diversity of Hingham. And I think that all of us find that that is very important. The words rainy day fund don't appear in the financial policy, but informally, the financial policy has been regarded as our rainy day fund. And if there ever were a rainy day, this is it. And with respect to how fund balance accumulates, I do think we owe a tip of our cap, if we wore caps anymore, to our department heads and town management for frugal management of their individual budgets throughout every year that result in the accumulation of savings that we have. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, no, I think that's actually a great point because I think there's a great deal of trust that's built into this appropriation. And later in one of the slides, I talk about town meetings appropriation as kind of a not to exceed amount. And the expectation is you're not, you know, you know, some of these like corporate, you know, budgets or probably other municipal governments where you scurry at the end of the year to make sure you've spent everything down. And that has never been the expectation in the Town of Hingham. And we, I think, I think it's a great point, Bob, that it's the trust of town meeting to say, hey, you told me, you told me this is what you needed. I'm going to give you authorization to spend what you need. But if it turns out you don't need it, or there are more efficient ways to approach what you want to do, you know, the expectation is that that's what you're going to do. And that, I think you're absolutely right, has meant, has been a product of, I think, careful volunteer leadership, but supervision and management by department heads and the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator. So great point. So go ahead.
I was just going to add one point that you've stressed to me when I first got on the board and others have brought home with respect to our policy is that unassigned fund balance should not be used to fund recurring operating budget items. And I know that that's something that we've respected and I know you're going to cover it as we go forward in terms of the use of fund balance.
No, that's a really good point, Joe. Thank you. So unless there are questions, I think Lucy Hancock's on the line intimately familiar and probably wrote some of the changes to the financial policy. So if there are members of the public that have any questions or comments with respect to the financial policy piece, I'd certainly entertain them now. Otherwise, we'll move on to the budget process part of the discussion. Okay, seeing done. So then next, we wanted to just summarize for you how the budget process works in Hingham so you can understand, you know, what's behind the numbers that appear in your warrant, what happened to develop that budget. And so I think if maybe Tom and Michelle could start and talk about the budget message and the beginnings of the budget process and then, you know, maybe we'll move to Bob and Victor to again, talk about the Advisory Committee process in approving the budget.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Karen. So regarding the budget process, beginning in October, the finance team consisting of myself, the Assistant Town Administrator, the Town Accountant, the Treasurer Collector, and the Town Assessor meet to review the revenue collections to date for that fiscal year and then to begin developing projections for the next fiscal year. That review includes analysis of information from a variety of sources, including state collection rates, the general marketplace, interest rates, et cetera. Based on that review, I would then compile a budget memo that I issued to all the department heads that contains a directive to guide the budget development for that fiscal year. Michelle and I at that point would then meet with each of the department heads to review their preliminary budget semitals. Final budget semitals are generally delivered to our office in early November for a compilation of the budget books that are then distributed to the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee members by Thanksgiving. That's always our goal. Budget hearings are then held by the Boards of, by the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, generally in December and January, with the school department presenting their budget to a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Advisory in February. It's important to note that an early draft of the revenue forecast is presented to the Forecast Group in early November. I can jump forward a little bit here. The Forecast Group is, consists of the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, myself, the Assistant Town Administrator, Michelle Montegier. We have the Town Accountant, Chair and Vice Chair of the Advisory Committee, Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee, Superintendent of the Schools, and the Director of the Business and Support Services for the School Departments in all of these meetings. And we meet periodically, as it says here, to direct the, to discuss the budget process and the subsequent revenue projections. So I think that that's an important process. It's worked really well for the town, but that's the budget process in a nutshell at a high level.
So I guess I'd make two comments before moving on. One is just, you know, I think it's important to focus on the makeup of this Forecast Group because it'll, the Forecast Group is going to play, I think, a critical role in the financial management plan for FY21. So I think it's important for people to understand who's in the room for that and that I think in kind of the regular budget process, it's important for all of these people to sit together so that everybody's on the same page with respect to what we are projecting for revenues. And it's on the basis of those conservative financial projections that we craft a budget that we ultimately recommend to you. And that budget has to be balanced. And again, that's going to, that'll come up in the financial management plan when we talk about the effect of the COVID crisis. Maybe just for a minute here, I'd stop and ask Michelle Eyre to maybe make a comment on the School Committee budget process and, you know, I have a little bullet in the slide that that feeds into the municipal side approval process. And we approved the school budget in February. So Michelle, if you want to make a couple of remarks?
Sure, thank you. Thanks for including me tonight and for all your work on this. I'm not sure which of our groups has it more challenging these days. It's not a contest though, right? It's challenging. So the budget process this year was a little different because we have a new Superintendent, Dr. Austin, and we, the committee, had asked him when he came, as one of his first orders of business was to take a deep dive into the budget and see, you know, what we needed, what we could, what was kind of critical to have, you know, what was level services. So he put together a couple of different iterations of the budget and made those presentations to Advisory, to Board of Selectmen, to the Committee. And then working together with both groups on this call, we came up with our initial budget. Then of course, everything changed. And we were really grateful and glad to be, to partner with the Board of Selectmen and Advisory in crafting the financial plan we're going to propose at town meeting. I think it was just, the timing of the whole thing was just so difficult to manage, right? Because we had just finished up the budget process when the COVID-19 virus impact really hit our town and their state. But it was sort of too soon to see what exactly the financial impacts were going to be. So we are, despite the fact that we are in the middle of June already and we have no idea what schools are going to look like in the fall, we are committed to following that financial plan. We've already put the austerity measures in place, pulled back in a couple of hires we were going to do, just simply because we need to see what the landscape looks like.
Great, thank you. Victor, Bob, do you want to maybe take us through?
Sure, back up a little bit to pick up from where Tom was. So as Tom mentioned, the budget books are provided to Advisory around Thanksgiving. And this year, you were ahead of Thanksgiving, so thank you, Tom.
Yeah, made for a great weekend.
Always willing to help.
At the start of the AdCom year, the Chair assigns members or teams of members to different budgets, to specific departmental budgets. When we get the budget book from Tom's office, we then meet the individuals or the teams, meet with those departments, either in person or by phone, and do a deep dive into the budget. They go line by line through the payroll side and the expense side. The themes that we look at are really to understand departmental priorities and the resulting service levels, evaluate any significant changes, assess financial impacts both for the current year and then if there's something new being proposed, how is that going to be, going to affect future budgets? We try to be fair and balanced. The goal this year was to have level services, as it often is. That's the initial goal. So what does it cost to provide the same services that we've had the year before? Typically, the increases, understand why the budget's increased as a result if we still have a level services. Typically, that's because of contractual increases for either salaries or just expense inflation. We then, so the individuals or the teams meet with the department heads. They then come back and report to full AdCom. So there will be a hearing for the full Advisory Committee where the liaison from AdCom presents the budget. The department head is typically present as well to explain further and also to answer questions. There are often additional requests for items beyond, new initiatives beyond level services. Those are discussed also at our meeting and the individual liaisons will have tried to understand the reasoning for the new request. Why is it really, why is it really necessary? What's being proposed? What's the long-term impact of that request? At our, meaning the full Advisory Committee hearing, the liaison will conclude the presentation with a recommendation of the base budget and then will identify the additional requests. They'll be discussed as well, but we won't have any recommendation and we don't vote at that time on either the full budget or the base budget or the additional requests. We're looking at budgets, municipal side, the education side, the capital budgets, and then we also look at the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds are the country club, sewer, and in the future, it'll be water as well. So we look at those budgets as well as the, you know, the municipal and education. The Committee does this throughout, well, December, January are the bulk of our budget hearings. In February, we hear from the Capital Outlay Committee, which has been on its own path throughout the prior few months, which it's evaluating all the capital requests from the various departments and making its priority list and coming up with its recommendations to Advisory and the Selectmen. And we hear from them typically late February, early March. Then as Michelle was alluding to, the school budgets on a separate process, a separate timeframe. And Bob, your Advisory has a four-member committee that are the liaisons to the school department. And Bob, you're one of those liaisons. Do you, do you want to speak to the Advisory view of the education budget process?
So there is a subcommittee, as Victor mentioned, the Advisory Committee Education Subcommittee, affectionately referred to as ASIS. And the members of that subcommittee typically attend either in person or virtually the school department meetings that deal with its budgets, line by line. And that subcommittee, here's the presentations from Dr. Austin and from the Business Manager, John Ferris. And here's the comments of the members of the School Committee. The school budget is always somewhat of a challenge because of the aspirational goals for the education of our citizens and the constraints that are necessary due to the amount of money that we have. This year was no different. Dr. Austin basically presented budgets in four different levels, status quo budget and three other aspirational budgets of additional educational tools and expenses that he thought were worthy of consideration for the town. School budget is also constrained every year by federal and state mandates that the Town of Hingham does not control. School budget is also constrained every year by federal and state mandates that the town of Hingham does not control. And so typically, the increase in the school budget on an annual basis tends to be somewhat double the increase in the budgets of other town departments. This year was, was no different from that. The status quo was funded and some of the level one was funded. But at that point, there were no additional resources to address the aspirational goals of the other budgets. But it's a very careful and thoughtful process that results in a recommendation to the full advisory committee, which then addresses on its own the recommendation and ultimately votes to approve a budget for the schools. And I'll leave it there.
Thanks, Bob. Mary?
So, Karen, I'm sorry, go ahead. I mean, I'll just wrap up as to where we then proceeded, but.
Yeah, go ahead and then I'll, I'll call on Mary.
Okay. So this year, and this is typical in, in other years as well. By early March, we've heard all the budgets. We've heard the selectmen's recommendations on the budgets. And we have usually two meetings. We'll have a meeting to review all of the numbers. And this is informed by the most recent forecast. This year, the forecast was updated on March 3rd. So we had a picture of what the revenue was. We knew what we were working with. We heard the town administrator's priorities on the additional requests. And that was modified from his earlier priorities because the revenue picture had changed a bit from the previous forecast. We have lengthy discussion on, on all of the budgets, both level services and then in particular, the additional requests. The second meeting, we do it again and we take a vote on, on all of the budgets. This year, we voted for, well, Articles 4, 5, and 6. So the combined budgets are $126,940,526. There are additional assessments that the state imposes. And then there's an overlay amount account for money that if people are challenging tax assessments or that sort of thing, that get the, gets the budget up a bit higher. So the total budget is $128,488,733. So that was voted March 10th. And no, we thought at that point that next stop was town meeting.
Right.
Well, did we know?
I just want to put something in context for people who, you know, I think, I hope people have gotten an appreciation for the diligence and just the thousands of hours that collectively are put into this. You know, Victor mentioned a second ago that the budget was 100 and, you know, it was about $128 million. And I think it's just worth pointing out before we talk about the plan for FY21 in light of COVID-19, that in that $128 million budget, the new requests for the school department and the municipal departments combined were like $200,000. I mean, what, you know, what we saw this past year was if you look at, if you look at the cost of just keeping everything going and you compared that to the revenue, we only had the ability to fund $200,000 of new things. And that's between the school department and the municipal departments, all of whom put forward very worthy requests. I think at least for, you know, for me, understanding that our budget didn't contain a lot of new initiatives informed my decision process on how we approach FY21. So I don't want people to have the idea that this budget includes all this new stuff because it doesn't.
That's a very good point, Mary. They, there are a couple of new positions proposed on the municipal side that really are in response to the reorganization of the engineering department and the elimination of the engineering department. So some of the work that was being done in that department, being proposed for a procurement officer and a GIS coordinator. There's also a proposed new custodian for town hall that's needed. There is some money set aside as a new request for an overlap for an IT director to come up to speed during a short period of time when, when, because we're expecting the existing director to be retiring. So we need to have the new person come up to speed quickly with the town's systems. There are a number of very minor items that were new requests, things like uniforms for building inspectors so that they can be identified if they're making a visit to a house, but that's minor money. A few other items in that, you know, ballpark of a couple of thousand dollars or so each.
And, and you know, something that the procurement officer and GIS coordinator in particular, GIS coordinator was going to be shared with the water system. So there'd be some offset to that cost potentially for the town, once the town's able to acquire the water system. And the GIS coordinator too was in part being funded from savings from engineering. So it kind of looks new. It, it appears new, but it was also sort of a reshuffling of existing, kind of existing dollars. You know, nonetheless, we, we treated it as, you know, a, a new position. So that kind of brings us to the end, I think, of the, the budget process. I don't know whether Joe or anybody else has any, any comments. I, I think Mary's spot on. You know, I sort of outlined my takeaways of each of the sections. And, and one of the things I hope you get from this discussion is just how methodical and thoughtful and data-driven the budget process is to come up with a very conservative, I think, request. Again, based on very conservative revenue assumptions. That would be, I think, one of my chief takeaways from this section. Any comments from anybody else or any members of the public with respect to the budget, FY21 budget process discussion? Okay. So Victor kind of teed this up beautifully because it was like, you know, we, we usually sort of take a breath in March because as, as you've heard, the march up to the balanced budget, which concluded with the Board of Selectmen revoting their recommended budget so that we can, along with the school committee, present a consistent request to town meeting across those three bodies. So I think we revoked our, our budget on March 12th that picked up the recommendations made by the advisory committee on the 10th. And we thought we were done. And literally, you know, state, state of emergency was declared, town hall and schools were closed as of March 13th. And then, you know, we began to experience the economic uncertainty and eventual downturn caused by the global COVID pandemic. And so then the question became, well, we, you know, we built that budget based on, again, on conservative financial assumptions. And those conservative financial assumptions were evaporating before our eyes. So we could not in good conscience continue to march along thinking that the meals tax money that we thought was going to come in to support a portion of the budget, you know, that's one of the revenue inputs to our budget. When restaurants are closed and no one can go out to dinner, you know, we can't, we can't with a straight face walk into town meeting and say, we're going to have the same projected revenue from meals tax as we did even in the prior year. So I don't know whether Tom and Michelle might want to talk a little bit about how we analyze the revenue downturns because that led to then a budget deficit and we had to, we had to come together to decide how we're going to deal with that budget deficit.
Sure. I can speak a little bit to that. Karen, one of the three main things that we, we did here is what you just touched on, the meals tax revenue and conservatively projecting that based on the COVID-19 restrictions with the restaurants operating only as takeout and delivery until this week, actually. The main one was projection, predicted shortfalls in the state tax revenue that we think will affect our state aid and a few other categories of local receipts by as much as 19.2% based on the numbers that we were seeing from the Massachusetts Taxpayers Association or Foundation and the Mass Municipal Association. So that was a big piece where we needed to revise our numbers downwards. And then the third area was we looked at some of the historical trends that Hingham experienced in the Great Recession years of FY09 and FY10 and used what we saw then to adjust our FY21 tax collections down slightly. That was sort of our best example of what we might see in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So all of that combined led us to about a $3.3 million projected shortfall with the information we knew as of the time of developing the FY21 financial plan. And I think that still stands true today.
Great. Thank you. And so, you know, we, we are now anticipating in the forecast group this $3.3 million budget deficit and the question became, you know, how do we deal with it? And Mary, I don't know whether you might want to make some preliminary comments because you were running some numbers to sort of figure out where we were and what the hole might look like and where those assumptions came from. I don't know whether you want to make any comments about that at this point.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, okay. I was, I was sort of muted and unmuted and. Yeah. So, you know, I think as, as, as the town was looking at, at what was going to be happening with our revenue, we basically wanted to try to, as Michelle said, you know, have that be a data-driven approach and to try to understand the different places where our revenue could be, where we could experience a revenue shortfall. And, and, and that's what led to the, to the, to the three and a half, $3.3 million issue. Karen, I'm sorry, but did you have a, a specific question? I'm not sure I answered your question.
No, no, I think that's right. So, you know, maybe I'll just kind of tee up the plan a little bit. And, and then, you know, we could, we can have a little bit of a discussion about how we got where we are. So, you know, as Mary said, I think, I think there were, there were a few iterations. I guess one of the questions I had asked you was, as Michelle was pointing out, some of the information we took from the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation. I think that it was important to us that whatever numbers we chose for revenue assessments had some, had some basis. There was some foundation. We weren't just, you know, completely guessing. And the, I think for me, it was important that we had a vision for what we wanted this plan to be. And I think Michelle Eyre made this point early on, which was, we first thought, well, you know, we've all experienced the evolution of this crisis and frankly, the evolution of the, the economic aspect of the crisis. And so every day it feels like the ground's moving slightly underneath you. And, and that, that's not, if you've listened to where we've come from in terms of how we budget, that, that like shifting sand is not, is not conducive to our, our budget process, right? So one of the things that we, that we didn't want to do, and I think we came to some agreement about that, was make cuts just to make cuts. And so we thought, okay, if we can come up with a plan that helps us minimize the immediate disruption to municipal and school operations and services, you know, that, that should be one of our goals. If we need to disrupt municipal and school services because the financial picture worsens even further, that's, that's another conversation. But for right now, let's try to stay the course. Let's take account of what we know will be COVID-related expenditures for which the town and the schools would seek reimbursement. So there's added costs. Every, I mean, you, you see it in your, your life. You see it in your work life. There's added cost to businesses and governments to, to do the same thing they were doing before. It's costing more money, right? And we have to make adjustments both to our physical plant and to the manner in which we provide services. And that's going to cost money. So we want to take account of that. And we also want to preserve our, our sound fiscal stewardship of the town's resources measured in part by our AAA credit rating. So we want to hearken back again to where we started, which is what does our financial policy say? We went to the page on pandemic and it wasn't there. But what, what does it generally say about our philosophy with respect to our finances? And in particular, how we would use our, our town savings account or our unassigned fund balance? And so, you know, let me just take us through the plan in brief and then maybe ask Tom and Michelle and Victor and Bob to talk about the tier one expenditure controls and, and then, you know, what might happen if, if things progress further. So Bob Curly mentioned earlier in our discussions, you know, some of the resources that may become available to us would be what we call budget turnbacks from fiscal year 20. And fiscal year 20 concludes on June 30th of this year. So we would look and see what the town appropriated last fiscal year. And we hope to see some turnbacks from those budgets that normally will fall to unassigned fund balance, as Victor described earlier. We, because, and I think Michelle Eyre alluded to this, because when this all hit, we immediately started to be really careful about any money that we didn't have to spend. We are, we are hoping to see some of those turnbacks, which will actually cushion or provide some cushion to the resources that we'll need to operate effectively in FY21. So we've got those turnbacks and then, then the question was, okay, we've identified this $3.3 million hole. We came together and suggested that we could use $3.3 million of unassigned fund balance for capital expenditures and other non-recurring long-term liabilities that would otherwise have been funded with operating revenue that we anticipated in FY21 and is now evaporated, right? So we could, we could use some of our savings account, consistent with our financial policy, to plug these one-time holes for these one-time expenditures. But if we're going to do that, and Mary, you know, Mary made this point, she may want to expand on it. We just didn't want to do that without, without a plan because we had no, you know, we, we don't know what the future holds. And so we want to be careful as we use that money, that we don't have to go back to the well again. Or we don't have to go back to the well without another plan. And I think the hallmark of our fiscal stewardship really is grounded in developing a plan for, for how we're going to manage our way in this crisis. And, and so that's what the financial management plan for FY21 brings to the table. But Mary, I don't know whether you want to make any comments at this juncture?
You know, I would just say one thing that, that I think was really helpful as we were, as we were thinking about that plan. To your point, Karen, we, we sort of said, hey, if, if we look at our unassigned fund balance and we look at where we are versus our policy, we certainly have the capacity to use it. And as Bob Curly said, it's the rainy day fund and, and this is as rainy as it gets. I think we also understood that this could have a multi-year effect. And so I think, I think some great work that, that our treasure collector, Jean Montgomery, did suggested that in the, in the recession of 2008, the, the impact on Hingham tax revenue was actually felt, you know, 18 or 24 months out. So we, we didn't necessarily want to use more of the fund balance than about the $3.3 million because we could be in a similar situation in a year and faced with the possibility of contracting services. I just had one other thing and, and it's something that, you know, as we were developing this plan, the, the question of how do you know when you engage? And I know Bob and Victor are going to talk about tier, you know, tier one. How do you know when you're going to engage it? How do you know when you've got a, you know, something's, it, it's time to take more drastic measures? I think one of the things that Tom Mayo did from the very start that was super helpful was to say, we're going to have some metrics and some indicators. They're going to be independent to Hingham so that we can keep score during, during the year. So that at any, any point in time, we can look at an objective measure and say, are we in a good place? Or do we have to take more serious measures? And that's where the Mass Taxpayers Foundation Revenue Collection metric came up. And I think that's really helpful because if we get to the point where we have to make tough choices, this isn't decision-making on a whim. This isn't people thinking it, it's good, it's bad. good, it's bad, we're doing this based on data and metrics from reliable sources in Massachusetts, which I just think is a better approach.
Thanks, Mary. So Tom and Michelle, could you spend just a couple minutes? I, I am mindful that we're, you know, I had said an hour, we're, we're bumping up against that. So if you could spend just a couple minutes talking about the development of the Tier One Action Plan, and then maybe I'd have Bob and Victor, you know, talk about the advisory committee role in, in managing the plan.
Sure. And, and in broad strokes, the Tier One Action Plan was put together by myself and Michelle about several weeks ago. And we evaluated, like it says here, we evaluated the potential benefits of limited hiring, delayed hiring, et cetera. We looked at expenditure controls for both capital and discretionary operating costs. We put them into that, into a spreadsheet, a pre-designed spreadsheet, and we were able to identify approximately $400,000 of additional savings in, in Tier One that would, that, that we're, we're going into the fiscal year anticipating being able to save.
Great, thank you. And maybe before I call on Victor, Michelle Air, if you wanted to talk a little bit about what the schools have done in that same regard, if you...
Sorry. There. Yeah, so we've done the same. So we've identified, to the extent that, not knowing what schools are going to look like in the fall, some of the items that we can, some of the line items that we can trigger if we need to on spending, including simple things like supplies and then more deeper things such as, you know, bringing in, bringing in different technologies that we can use to reduce some of the costs, some transportation ideas that John has, John Ferris has. So we've been able to identify a couple of things that, you know, if X happens, then we can do Y without interrupting learning, without, and still being delivering the high quality of education that our students need in this town and, and our parents certainly expect and that students deserve, but also being very mindful of the part that we play in ensuring the financial health of the town.
Great, thank you. So Victor, Bob, if you can kind of take us home here, you've got, I understand you've had some conversations about the Tier One Action Plans, and, you know, I guess a couple might be helpful, what happens if things get worse? And, you know, what does the process look like for you?
Sure. So which Tom was alluding to, so we're going into the year at Tier One, and that's involving deferring non-essential hires, some of the new hires, also deferring where possible expenses and capital projects. So it's important to note that for, to the extent a new hire is deferred till, say, the third quarter, there's a savings right there. So we won't, you know, if, if the rest of the budget worked out exactly as proposed, we won't be dipping into the full $3.3 million of the fund balance. Now, in terms of the process, there will be regular forecast group meetings, so the same group that was discussed earlier, will be meeting monthly, looking at revenue, looking at expenditures. They, the members of that forecast group will be reporting to their individual bodies. The advisory committee will be looking at this at a minimum quarterly in terms of seeing how the Tier Action, Tier One Action Plans have been working and tracking revenue against, as expenses have been going out or are continued to be projected. If the deficit, projected deficit reaches, the plan says $500,000, or if other developments are such that it looks like we need to take these steps, we would go to Tier Two. Tier Two involves doing additional reductions in the capital budget, also additional reductions in operations, could mean furloughs, and at this point, you can't tell. The discretion for how those would be implemented would be left to the town administrator and Dr. Austin on the school side. So advisory would not be saying, this is what you have to do. Advisory would be saying, hey, we've passed this benchmark, we are, need to take further steps. The general idea is that the town side would reduce by 40%, school side would take 60% of that reduction. That's based on the relative size of those departments or those portions of the town budget. However, we do recognize that the schools in particular may well have special needs and also would have statutory state and federal mandates that would have to be taken into account here. But certainly the goal is the 40/60 split. Change on the fly is necessary, see how conditions are on the ground. If Tier Two doesn't work, things were really bad, we needed money and couldn't cut spending further, we would have to call a special town meeting to come up with additional revenue, which would likely be using more of the unassigned fund balance, but we would need town meetings' approval to do that. You know, now, that's, at this point, pure speculation, as to, I, I don't anticipate any need for that, but that would be the fallback. As Mary was alluding to earlier, I see the big issue in the budget here as a lack of information. We don't know what revenue really is, and we won't have good predictions until at least later in the year, probably the fall or maybe even later. That's why the plan's so important, to keep the flexibility, give us the flexibility to adjust to changing circumstances.
Great, thank you. You know, so I hope, I hope, you know, you're getting some of the takeaway on the Financial Management Plan as, you know, a combination of the prudent use of unassigned fund balance plus data-driven financial controls that will put the town in a position to manage toward the appropriation with the help of the Forecast Group, the Advisory Committee, the School Committee, and the Board of Selectmen. So that's, that's, I think, the, the leadership of those three groups is going to be critical, and the continued evaluation of data, as, as Victor said, as it becomes available, will also be critical, I think, to the success of the, of the plan. So now, now that we've, you know, told you that we don't want to spend any money, I think it's important that we bring to your attention, where we have one, two, three, four Warren articles, that we are also asking you to approve the use of fund balance to fund. And I think it was important for us to bring this forward to you, because these articles really, I, I think really provide the foundation for the future vision for the town, and that it's important to at least have access to these appropriations. I think we will manage them as prudently as we can. But, you know, the, the, the sort of momentum of the municipality needs to continue to move forward, and these are all projects, some of them you'll be familiar with. They're all projects that have been in the works for, some of them for decades, that, you know, this, the, the request for feasibility funds will allow the town to continue to plan. We're not asking you to build a facility at this particular town meeting, but we are asking you for the tools to continue to evaluate what we think are very, very critical infrastructure needs for the town. And so I, and, and they will, these particular articles will be also using a portion of unassigned fund balance, which is not unusual. So, you know, absent the use of the $3.3 million to, to offset reduction in revenue that you heard about earlier, we would not have been using that, but we would, we, we do use unassigned fund balance, as, as Victor, I think, described earlier, for, particularly for capital projects. And these are all requests for feasibility money relating to capital projects.
Karen, can I jump in for a moment?
Yeah.
Article 17, the feasibility money for Foster, is actually, the proposal is to bond it, coming from unassigned fund balance. There is another cost from fund balance, though, that's, I'm not sure of the article number, but the amount is $93,000, and it would be funding cost of living adjustments for retirees for this current fiscal year.
Yeah, yep, that, absolutely true. I think, you know, the, the focus for me was on these bigger kind of capital needs for the town and, and to make sure that we were providing, you know, I think, the citizenry with the rationale for, well, wait a minute, why, you know, in, in this environment, why is it prudent to continue to move forward with these projects? But you're absolutely right. If you, if you take a look at, in total, what the town, year to year, withdraws from fund balance, you're absolutely right, the cost of living adjustment is, is part of that for this year. So I, I'm going to start off with the, the public safety building, but, you know, Mary and Joe and Victor and Bob may all want to weigh in, because this was, and Tom in particular, this was just a huge effort by everybody to identify this potential parcel and pull together a plan that actually, we think, solves a number of issues for the town. So you'll, you'll note that Article 12 is asking for feasibility money in the amount of $250,000 that we would take from unassigned fund balance to design a new public safety facility to be located on Route 3A. So we've identified a parcel, but before we would move forward to acquire the parcel, we need to know that we can build what we want to build there. And so we can't do that without funding, and that's what this article would do. I think on the next slide, there's a little more data, we might have to switch back and forth here, there's a little more data on the public safety facility and the senior center projects. I'm going to ask Joe to jump in on the senior center in a minute. I've been working on the public safety issue, which includes both the North, North Street Fire Station, as well as the Police Department space at Town Hall. You know, I've been working on that since the day after I got elected, and folks have been working on that, I would say, for, you know, five years before that, five or six years before that. So again, a kind of a decade-long effort to try to identify a facility, one or more facilities, that would address really the shortfalls in the, the police space at Town Hall, and also the inadequacies of the North Fire Station. I think Bob and Victor can speak. The, the Advisory Committee comment, I think, does a very nice job setting forth the rationale for this, this feasibility money. But Tom, I don't know whether you want to say anything at this point, or I'll turn it over to Victor and Bob.
Sure, if I can figure out how to unmute myself. And by the way, these, the hiccups in the screen, in the screen sharing is on me, not on Michelle. I've been tasked with movies around it, just want everyone to know that. Yeah, you know, Karen, just very briefly, you're absolutely right, this was a, a long effort at finding the right location. We have done that. 335 Lincoln is the right location. We have a, a letter of intent in place with the seller. It's the appropriate, it's the appropriate move at the appropriate time for the town. We have a lot of, we have a lot of capital, large capital needs regarding facilities in town, and I think that, you know, this is the linchpin to, to improving those facilities in a way that the rating agencies will expect. And that is, you know, not allowing your infrastructure to dilap, to, to dilapidate over time. So, so that's what, that's what this effort is, is geared at. It's, it's modernizing our, our, our police and fire forces, and it's, and it's allowing us to provide for a, a more modern facility for the senior center, which of course, Joe, as you said, will elaborate on.
Victor and Bob, anything in particular on the public safety complex?
Bob, you've been involved in the building reviews.
Well, I, I think what I'd say about them is, you know, of course, the public safety and the senior center are interrelated. They are, you know, opposite sides of the same coin. The most highly attended meeting of the advisory committee this year, I think, addressed the senior, the senior center. And, you know, there's a crying need for it. The advisory committee has toured the North Torrent Fire Station on probably every year for the last four or five years, and has recognized the significant deficits that that building presents due to its age. And this is an absolute need-to-have solution for the town that is ultimately going to result in substantial savings. And I think I'll leave it there.
Yeah, so, so Bob's right, the, the move is that the, the Police Department would move into a modern facility with the North Street Fire Station. Fire Headquarters will remain where it is, but the North Street Fire Station would move to this new facility. The police would move there, and it, it allows the senior center then to stay at Town Hall, but to expand into the space formerly occupied by the Police Department. And so Joe, I don't know whether you maybe want to pick up with the senior center article?
Sure. I think Bob really stole my thunder in terms of exactly what the plan is, which is the linking of the move of the public safety, so that it frees up the space for the senior center. And this, Article 14, which is the feasibility money, to consider the expansion of the senior, senior center is important, because we don't want the seniors going into the holding cells that the police are currently using. The idea is really to make this a facility that accommodates the programs and services for the senior population, and there's been a crying need for a long period of time. And if we can get that safety building project going, so that we free up the space, then this is the next step. The seniors, and quite frankly, the community at large is looking forward to this expansion, and hopefully will also address the parking issue, which has been a problem for many seniors as they've attempted to attend various programs. So this is, as has been said, this is a link. And if we can get this going, Article 14, the feasibility money is really necessary to move it forward.
And you, you've been just a huge advocate for this process, I think, understanding what the, the service limitations are, and as you've pointed out, the parking limitations, and, you know, I, I think we've all appreciated your focus and your ability to bring this issue forward at the, at the Board of Selectmen level.
Right.
Okay, so next up is the additional feasibility money for Foster. So I'll bring it up, even though Victor points out it, it will be from borrowed funds. I point out, I pointed out just because it, it does fall into that kind of capital planning realm that we will be asked to consider at town meeting. This appropriation actually adds on to a prior appropriation of $750,000. It's now that Foster School has been accepted into the MSBA program, we want to make sure that there's enough feasibility money available to actually do the planning. And I'd ask Michelle Air and then maybe Mary to make some comments about this.
Sure. Yeah, so this is an increase to the feasibility study that, funding that was approved, gosh, several town meetings ago, I believe it was 2017, simply because the costs to do feasibility have been increasing over the last few years, and the $750,000 we currently have allocated or appropriated may not be enough. These feasibility funds are partially reimbursable under the MSBA funding, so partnering, so if we do some of the, whatever percentage the MSBA matches, this is included in that match, so we would get reimbursed for some of these funds. I think it's important, particularly given where we are today with not knowing, again, what schools are going to look like in the fall, or even over the next couple of years, that we make sure that the feasibility study is done well and that we have the appropriate amount of funding set aside, so that we can get the best study in front of getting this project underway in the next couple of years.
Great. Mary, would you like to make any comments on Foster?
You know, not on Foster, but just while we're on this screen, as, as we're talking about spending money, I actually want to remind everybody... about spending money, I actually want to remind everybody that within the next two months, $1.7 million is coming back into fund balance, which is reimbursement for the feasibility study and the advance of transition costs relative to the town's acquisition of the water system. You know, people may remember that, beginning in 2012, over the course of a few town meetings, we asked the town to allow us to use some of the fund balance to explore the feasibility of purchase, and made a commitment that if the town did that, those funds would be paid back. And I can't think of a better year for those funds to be paid back than this year, given the many demands on fund balance. And again, it's going to be just over $1.7 million that will come into fund balance, which is more than enough to fund all of the items listed on this page.
Right. And I mean, right, it, it was the confidence, I think, that, that town meeting had to acquire the water company that, that allowed us to be reimbursed for those costs. And the timing now, I think, has been really dependent on your work and the work of our, our legal partners and our environmental consulting partners to come up with a contract that will put us on, on a path to close shortly. And that's been, and I think I've pointed this out more than once, we've pointed it out at our meetings, you know, that effort started the day after town meeting and has gone on unabated even through today. So, you know, I think, again, your laser focus on getting this over the finish line puts us in a position to anticipate those revenues.
Thank you. And we should also mention that the Transition and Evaluation Committee, five very dedicated citizens have been instrumental in all the work this year.
Right. So then, if we could just really, really briefly, Tom and Michelle, just touch on the, the facilities article for municipal and school buildings, that'd be great.
Sure. This is a long-discussed effort at understanding the needs in the town infrastructure, the town, the existing town buildings, and how we can best maximize the use of those facilities.
Great. And that's an article, right, you were saying that, you know, we don't, the, some of these other feasibility study monies, we really need to get going with. That one, we may be able to, to sort of assess where we are and then determine the timing of that one, right?
That's right. We, we wouldn't plan to initiate that effort in, in the first, maybe, half of the fiscal year. We'd want to see where we are first and make it, make a, you know, a responsible decision.
Okay. Well, I see we're sort of bumping up against our, our time limit here. You know, for me, the takeaway from the, from the capital-related warrant articles is just that it's really important that we continue to plan and plan prudently, and I think you've heard that the, the articles before, before you have been the result of, you know, years and years and years of work. And importantly, as Mary suggests, we are anticipating a return to fund balance of an amount in excess of what we would ask for, for the funding of these, these warrant articles. And I would commend to you, because I read them, the comments from the advisory committee with respect to each of these projects, because I think it speaks very, in a very detailed way, to the history of the projects as well as to the, the need to request these expenditures. So I think at this point, maybe some concluding remarks from folks, and we can, we can send everybody on their way. I think, again, we were hoping to put this in front of you as a, as a tool to use in, you know, getting ready for your town meeting, in, in large part because this has been such an unusual economic climate. We are hoping that you will attend town meeting, which is scheduled to be held on the multipurpose field outside at the high school on June 20th. The meeting will kick off promptly at 2:00, because I know we'll have folks in the stands just waiting to get going. And Tom and Michelle, together with Harbor Media, have also put, put together a video that you should be seeing that'll take you through the check-in process and show you how the field will be set up. We are expanding the tent space, we'll have a cooling station, there'll be access to restrooms, it's handicap accessible, we'll have people help you get to your seats. But part of the reason for doing this tonight is, we need you. This, you are the town's legislature, and the town can't move forward, you know, with any of the actions outlined in the plan, in the warrant, without your, your presence and your vote. Mary and Joe, some concluding comments?
I just, you know, Karen, thank you, and thank you to Victor and Bob and to Michelle for joining. You know, I would also just say that I think the warrants have arrived over, I know ours came yesterday. I would also, as people are looking at the warrant, I would direct you to the reports that Karen, Victor, Michelle, the Chair of Capital Outlay, put together. I think those are also very informative and really do set the table for the decisions that we'll be asking the town to make.
Yep. And I, I just add, this is, this is my first time going through this process, and the amount and sophistication of due diligence is just overwhelming, and it's important for those coming to town meeting to appreciate that this is a solid warrant that's been presented, and we look forward to seeing everyone.
Thanks, Joe. Michelle Eyre, any concluding comments?
Sorry. Ah, sorry. Yeah, yes, thank you, everyone, for all your work and for your partnership here. It's been challenging for everyone, and I'm hoping for a successful town meeting. I will be there. I am bringing my entire family. I have the little joke, I'm like, invite everyone to bring a plus one to the town.
A socially, socially distant plus one.
Right, exactly. Like, then we can get to the core. No, but we do have a lot of work to do over the summer, and, and I do just appreciate all this collaboration and the, I think, the great work that's being done on the town side and the school side, and the coming together of all these groups. It's important, I think, that we have a good plan and a united plan. So again, I thank you for including me tonight and for all of the work that's gone into putting this plan together.
Great, thank you. Victor and Bob?
I thank you, Karen, for setting this up. I've been impressed this year, as, as I am always, but this was a particularly difficult year with the willingness of all the different boards to work together for what we all see as the good of the town, and I'm looking forward to town meeting in, I guess, a little more than a week.
It's crazy, it's coming right up. Bob?
My, my thanks and my appreciation and aberration to a great team that does a wonderful job for a great town and makes it what it is. Thank you.
Well, I think that's the way to conclude. Any comments or questions from the public? I don't see any. Well, I, you've heard it all, I, you know, we hope this is helpful to you, and certainly reach out. You have our emails if you have any questions, and as Mary said, the detailed reports, including the full, the full financial plan for FY21 is included in your warrant books. So stays healthy, everybody, and if you can, we really would appreciate your attendance at town meeting on June 20th. Take care. Good night, everybody.
Karen? Yeah, so I would move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor of the Board of Selectmen adjourning, say aye. Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?